And we will start with public comments. And we'll start with the folks in the room and then go to anyone that's on Zoom. Phil.
Last meeting, we talked about having Brandon or somebody from the assessors zoom in and talk to us about the equalization ratio and how that's being used. Just wondering where that stood.
I don't know if Dina has touched base with him or not.
I have touched base with him and as soon as he sets up a time that's agreeable with his schedule, he's very overrun right now with lots of responsibilities. So as soon as we get something, it'll be a while.
Okay, but we are working on that.
Yeah, if we can get some advance notice, just to make sure that we can be there reviewing.
You guys can be there. Okay. That's that 65. Okay. Anything else?
I'll for me.
Rich?
Here to listen today? Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Dina, do we have someone?
No, just Jordan.
Just Jordan? Just Jordan.
Just Jordan.
Okay.
If that little animated chick on there is some sort of a AI thing that's listening to all of our
All of our chit chat?
All of our meetings and absorbing them and it's gonna use them to take over the world.
No, 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 that's your ICE observer.
Oh, yeah.
Probably not with brown skin though.
Well, the world from Martin and Andrew, alright.
That would be something, wouldn't it? We have a set of minutes. This will be, I don't think we can approve these right now. From last week's meeting where Ben and I were and David was absent, so we will have to put those off until next meeting.
Yeah, I can't vote on them. I read them and see the title as well.
Oh, good.
Cheers, thank you.
We have a manifest. An amount of $42,920.77. I think, as I looked through this this morning, the amount seems correct, but I think there may be a couple of different dates that you might wanna just look back through and see. Like with the retirement benefits, everything was paid. One person said June and the rest were all July. Does that matter? I think it just.
It would be June's payment.
Oh, great. Okay. What do we, did you have a chance to look at these, David?
Yeah.
Do you want to either? Good for you. So I'll move them. The manifest and.
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. Manifest is approved. Here's the manifest. Next up, we have an ambulance agreement to be signed. I actually did read through every blessed word of it. Understood some of it.
Could you remind us the history of this, Dina? Didn't I, didn't we get this and I reviewed it and made comments to it and?
Yeah, they made all those changes. I sent, I asked them for a
A red line.
A red line one from them and then you red lined it for us and sent it back and they made the changes and.
It's been in the works for some time.
Correct. So there's two copies here, one for you guys and one for them. So there's two places to sign.
So it's just for signatures?
Yeah.
We don't need to vote on it?
Uh, yeah, you should.
We should. Okay, then I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. The ambulance agreement.
Does that have the right rhythm without Ben?
I know. It's fairly standard language, many pages, and it covers, we use their service. And it covers our ability to use their service and everybody's indemnified.
Should I date this, Dina, or?
Okay. Then, oh, I really love this one. The PA-28 Inventory of Taxable Property Form for 2026. Typically, we as a town have voted, or select board, to not use this form. It's actually a form that would get sent to every individual in town who would then report on their private finances, what they have for inventory. And then it gets sent to the state and we have the option of not doing it. So we just need to sign the form, but first I will vote that we not participate in the inventory of taxable property.
Second.
Okay.
What do, what do they use it for if you do it?
It's, well, it's not necessarily, you both use it. The town uses it, like if somebody adds on a shed or if somebody adds on something that's taxable and they fill it out on the form and we don't have it and they didn't get a permit for it, then we could, we could do that. But generally, people don't put things on the form that didn't get approved.
Before they're constructing, we're gonna send them a little paper and they're gonna go, oh, yeah.
Well, and traditionally.
Let me mention that giant barn I put up?
And traditionally, we don't do it because the administrative cost is very high and the information we get is really not useful.
So all those in favor of not doing it, say aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye. Thank you, Dina. So we have to sign another piece of paper.
Where were the assessing officials on this form?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Let's still wait for a second.
Next up, we have the Department of Interior Payment and Ru of Taxes Payment of $6,072. I will move acceptance of that.
I'll second. Do you know what does this relate to?
The acquisition trail, the property in town that the.
So the town owns some property that is.
No, the town doesn't own it, the.
The feds own it.
Yeah.
Feds own it.
Department of Interior and they give us a payment and move taxes towards it every year.
Interesting. But, I mean, normally if that was owned by like Upper Valley Trails Lions or something like that, you'd think it would be tax exempt. But they, but they're not tax exempt even under the.
They are. This is just, it's essentially just a gift that they do to any town where their trail goes through.
Okay.
So all those in favor of accepting this lovely donation, say aye. Judy, aye.
Not a touch screen.
I just like people to know, you know, how much it is and what it is, so.
Okay. We have received a notice from VOT about some upcoming bridge maintenance. The bridge that goes over Trappel Brook on Route 10, very close to the Chaffee Wildlife Center.
Right between the Ball Field and Chaffee.
And I went and read this. And the only thing I would have to say, yes. Cultural Resources Public Parks, yes. Dina, I agree with all your answers except water quality concerns, existing or potential hazardous materials or contaminants not yet known of. Or let's say popular. There was at one point, and I'm not sure if it's relevant, some historic Indian campsites on the east side of the road just before the bridge. Is that anything that?
I don't know anything about that, but maybe. Well, and the.
Any historical?
The Heritage Commission gets this. The Conservation Commission gets this. So everybody gets a turn to fill it out, but I will ask, I will, I will, I'll look that up and see.
Okay.
Like I left Japanese weed, which, you know, there could be something, but they'll know, the Conservation Commission will know that. I answered it once, I thought that I could.
Okay.
But anyways, it's really just a heads up.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything official, it's not in our hands, other than.
No, they're just collecting info. Yep, and if you guys wanna add anything to it, we can add it to.
Did you see it?
Yeah, I really, I didn't. You know, other than the old Indian cemetery that's.
The burial grounds, possibly.
Stephen King.
Pottery sharps. Okay. And then we have we have an intent to cut in that Form 1, lot 13.1, Preston.
Would we do that without Ben?
Yes, Ben sent, Ben sent me a note last night that the intent to cut looked good.
Okay.
So I'm happy to forward you that email if you want me to.
Do you wanna vote on this?
I think we should.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. I will move it, you will second. And it's approved with Ben's email, yes. Then we have the Lyme Center Academy Building, a use application. We've talked about this in the past. And this is now gonna be at the Academy Center. Thank you. Not on the green. It's the end of July, July 30th, from 4:30 to 6:30. I looked through it and it looked to me like it met our guidelines. And I didn't hear anything from Jordan or Dina and so I'm guessing it's.
The only thing I just got this morning from Jordan is that the police cannot be present for that event to enforce any parking. So if they, if you guys feel they need to have an officer there, we'll have to get a special detail officer. But given, let's see, I'm looking at the amount of vehicles.
Sixty.
They're saying sixty people, thirty vehicles or so.
Parking at the church.
And I don't know, I think part of the requirement is for them to meet with the chief and have a parking plan. So I think they need to do that, but barring that, I would say
Yeah.
Other than knowing where the septic is or the tent up.
Well, yeah. I thought they had a parking plan and I think they previously talked to our now entire chief.
They could have, but, you know.
And the parking plan, as I understood it, was first Baptist church.
They'll use the spaces at the church and the neighborhood. So, you know. I mean, they have to have somebody in charge of parking.
Yep.
And somebody has to be willing to, if somebody parks on the side of the road or does whatever they're not supposed to, we almost have to address that, so. But again, I think you can approve it with the understanding that.
We need a parking good room, Jordan, to be present.
Right.
I will move it with that proviso. How do you feel?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye.
And I'll second.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Dina.
I'm restful weary in this meeting.
Well, the good stuff comes later. Okay.
Really, there's good stuff?
That was the intent to cut, that was the CCL. We have a request for assistance from the state fire marshal, HER and RSA 155:7. I'm not sure if that's a one or an L.
L.
And we've had a little situation with some construction that's been done that is unsafe and needs the state, we need the state's help with inspections and it's been ongoing for a while. Our fire chief and our health inspector are both on the case and in touch with the property owners and the state.
And they want, this is what this is, the chief and the deputy chief, Chief Rich and the deputy chief, and they are requesting that the board give the state fire marshal's office a request. This is a request for them to address the issues. So they're gonna be the enforcement people now.
And so we, yes, yes, sir.
Is this matter that has been before the planning board?
I believe it is.
Okay, thank you.
So we need to make a motion and then we need to send a letter?
I have the letter here, yes, you're all pointing pursuant to that, Marissa. But I think they will have the enforcement, the authority to enforce this.
We need to formally request, and you have the draft, the letter. Town of Lime formally requests the National State Fire Marshal's Office in accordance with the RSA to become the building official in order to assist the town in permitting, land review, and inspections.
Right.
It's in a package, David, if you wanted to see it.
This came in after you sent out stuff to us yesterday, you know?
No.
Was it? I didn't see the material you sort of looked.
Having.
The letter from, sorry, the letter from Aaron, isn't it?
That I saw, but I didn't see our letter.
This is just the same, it's just a copy of exactly what he sent in his email. That said, this is what it needs to say.
Okay, I skipped approval on that as well.
The reason why the actual letter's not in there is because he was coming with the letter. But it got, he can't, he here, he's, somebody got called away.
Okay.
So I whipped it up.
Thank you.
So we're gonna approve this?
Yes. I'll move to approve the letter and sign it. Thank you, David. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, David, aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, this is approved.
Aaron, thanks.
Sign.
So this is basically Aaron trying to not have to do this.
This is basically Aaron.
Making the statement that that guy instead of us.
Well, no, they've already tried to deal with it, Aaron and Michael have, and they're not getting anywhere. So it's time for the state to step in.
And also that because Lyme does not have a building inspector, then the state is supposed to step in and when there is a critical issue. So it's actually.
Well, it's interesting because this is the same thing that the number of the state actually did the inspection, wrote the report, voted on all their own things. So it only seems fitting that they handle it.
Yeah, and even though I know Michael and Aaron know building code, that doesn't mean cut it if you really have an issue.
Right.
So, okay. Next, we have we have a long letter from Ross McIntyre. We have a short letter to us from Ross McIntyre detailing the fact that he has preparation for the upcoming public meeting with FERC. And this has to do with the Wilder Dam and the impoundment and it's actually very well written and it has a lot of detail. I think, as far as I know, the only thing that we really need to do is perhaps approve of his sending the letter, which he will do anyway, but.
Well, I think he wants you guys to do a letter of your own and or go to the hearing or, you know, be active. That's the gist I got.
Yeah, that's what I got too. I'm not really that interested in doing any of that.
The only thing I would say is that I wouldn't mind if we sent a short letter saying that we support Mr. McIntyre's letter and, you know, our Conservation Commission, I know, is concerned.
And you guys have written a floor, you can just reiterate that those concerns are favored.
And I don't think we need to vote on that, but we can if you want. So if Dina whoops something up, we could.
You know, I'm sure everything he says is right, but there's a debate on all of this stuff. We as a board haven't done any independent research and we don't really have the ability to do that. And so weighing in on the substance of this dispute with respect to erosion along the bank of Connecticut, I don't feel like we're in a position to really say anything very intelligent about that.
I think we need to support our people that do have information, but I think that I've been out on the river privately and with a group and unfortunately, my feeling is the dam is going to do what the dam wants. FERC doesn't really wanna step into this. They'd end up only millions to every town along the river and I don't think they're gonna do that. Although you would think with Texas's little problem that they had, I would think dams and water management folks would be a little bit more concerned. I don't know.
Yeah, and setting up a fund, I think, who knows? You set the fund up, but then you gotta still prove that that's what's happening.
Yeah. Okay, so how do you feel, David, if we were to either reset what we've sent before and just say, we sent this before or it is now? Or we stand behind? I'm sure the Conservation Commission would do something, but.
Maybe they're better educated. I just, I just don't feel like I know enough to say, to weigh in on this really.
I know, well, the passports, and I think this one Sue was on the board and maybe Kevin or Simon, they were very into it. And there was testing being done, people were having, you know, people write, professionals write opinions about it and proving how the saturation in the banks are what's causing it, the up and down of the flow. But it's still a debated thing because the dam people hire engineers and say, no, that's not true.
Well, then also, a lot depends on what the baseline is. You know, like what are you comparing it to? You know, if there were no dam there, what sort of fluctuations would you have on the water level and what does that do? And, you know, would you have flooding more along the lines of what you had in Texas there maybe? And maybe that in an agricultural way is more damaging than having these small, but I just don't know.
But there's also.
And I think that's a hard, complicated scientific question and so I feel like personally, I don't wanna jump into that because I don't, we don't, I feel like we haven't done any research.
Well, you're talking about a lot of money, that's right, to do it. There's also some form, not a form, some document that was signed years ago when the dam was putting in.
Yeah, that was in like the sixties, I think.
Right, and, and the people in, or the select board in the town at the time signed off on this work being done to the River Road and the work being done. It's, it's, there's a lot to it, a lot, a lot, lot to it, so.
And also, just from a practical perspective, I feel like this is just yelling at the way. And that might be wrong, maybe, maybe all, maybe the, maybe FERC and the other governmental agencies involved in deciding what's gonna happen here are tentatively waiting for the town to wander away on this and their decision will turn on that, but I kinda doubt that.
Well, there are a lot of other towns that are, you know, obviously letting their opinions be known about erosion along the river, so.
Well, I would like to be one of those towns, but I'm not gonna do a study or anything. I would just say that I think that more consideration needs to be given to issues being created by the operation of the dam. But.
Sure.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do a pretty short.
And you know, I don't know what's going on or what is going on in the Conservation Commission. Maybe they've studied this more carefully and have, have a basis for coming to some sort of conclusion and in which case, that's great, but we certainly haven't.
No, we haven't.
Unless you guys did it while I was.
Yeah, the last.
Before you guys, there was, but I could say.
Judy's been running up and down the river path at my house taking notes.
Yes, measurements. It was a good letter Ross wrote up and he had some pretty telling pictures. All right, we'll just do something short and sweet, so at least they know we're alive.
We intervened in that.
Yeah, we did. We actually took action to be an intervenor.
Yes.
So. That was a couple of years ago, I think.
Yeah, it was.
We have it's 10:30, we have a legal, non-public, call it 11, but I believe this on our agenda. We have two non-publics. One is an elderly exemption and one is, has to do with personnel. And then at 11, we will be speaking with legal counsel.
Did we, are we gonna talk about the letter to the Smiths, the wife drafted and Joe reviewed? And is that? Yes, he has. He reviewed the first draft and gave, he gave us comments and I incorporated his comments into the draft that I sent you over the weekend.
Just yesterday, you did that?
No, we didn't. Two weeks ago, we, he looked at that.
I thought you were gonna talk about that.
But is that a public or a non-public, do you think?
I think it will be public once it is no longer a draft. I think it is a working document at this point.
Well, I think, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that letter is complete and ready to send out, I think. I mean, we might have Joe look at it again just to confirm that he's comfortable that I implemented these changes appropriately, what he suggested appropriately.
I did send it to him. And you should find that out today.
Okay.
Okay. So let's wait till that and then it will be a public letter and people will see what we stand. I would just say it's not where we had hoped to be, but.
Pretty close. I think, I went and looked at the property again over the weekend, over the holiday and I think it's getting close to where I'm.
It's acceptable.
Yeah.
Also, he had done some stuff.
Yeah, he got rid of that trailer. Something sinking into the mud on the end of the property. This is, we're talking about the goose pond.
Goose pond, not the door jester.
So we had gone out there and removed a whole trailer loaded.
Yeah.
Material. I'm trying to choose the.
Material. That's a nice choice of words.
And David, I actually share your assessment about the goose pond property that it's like, that's, that's an enormous improvement. So there's a couple of things left. There's a pile of rusty children's bicycles, like little teeny bicycles. There's two or three piles of debris, wood branches and stuff and, and there's a washing machine in the front yard and then there's some automotive parts, particularly truck seats, under tarps on, on a pallet and what else? I think that's probably about it. There's a bunch of broken up.
Washing machine.
Then I got the washing, I'm not sure if it's a washing machine or a dryer. I can't make that determination without going on the property, which I don't wanna do, but it's one or the other. Anyways, when, when we took all that stuff off the property when I was up there, they promised to deal with all of that stuff. And there was also a trailer that was buried, half buried in the roadway, in the edge of the road. He did get rid of the trailer. I was shocked actually and I went up there this weekend and they, they, that must have been hard to get it out, but he got rid of that. But the bikes and the washing machine and the car parts and the wood piles and all, he promised to get rid of all of that stuff and he hasn't done any of that, so.
And it was supposed to be by June 22nd?
No, it was, he was just gonna do it in a couple of weeks, but he, he, you know, he was getting married and how dare you interfere in that way? how dare you interfere with my wedding? Anyways, but it's now been a month.
Yeah, it has just been a month.
So I think if we sent him a reminder letter and asked him to do that, and if they don't do that, then we have to go back to court and ask the judge to order that they do that. And in our first draft, I had some threats about asking for sanctions too and Joe told me he can't do that, so I took that note.
Okay, so...
You remember that I sent him that letter, right? Do you know, I mean...
That I remember you sent Joe the letter?
This was a couple of weeks ago.
Sure. Honestly, my brain.
And you sent it to him, not me, actually.
My brain is not retaining anything. Yes, I did know that you had sent me a letter, right?
And he, he came back with comments in an email and this draft is a second draft that incorporates his...
See, I don't remember him coming back, but that's okay. Unless you do.
He may have just gotten back to David.
No, we got back to Dana, Dana sent it.
Oh, Dana sent it. Good work.
I'm usually the middle person because of all the RSA's we have to, that's very common.
Okay, so if you're curious, after we finalize and sign it, it will be a public document.
Thanks for going up there, David, and checking things out.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm riding by there on my bike route, so...
There you go.
Okay. So that draft will be discussed in non-public along with an additional issue with the attorney. And up next is this elderly exemption that we need to talk about. So I think I will move us to go into non-public under ninety-one A colon three, Roman numeral two, C, education. And David, you seconded it. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Ten thirty-three? Thank you.
Very much.